All right, we are good to go. It is Monday, April 15th at 7:30, and I call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council to order. Tony, can you call the roll?
Stengline?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Chesak?
Here.
O'Day?
Here.
Stunek?
Here.
Terry?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
Bedeau?
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a move to approve?
Approve.
Moved by Stunek. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We have an agenda. Item five is the consent calendar. The notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by a roll call. Is there a move to adopt the consent calendar? Moved by Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? Hearing none. Tony, can you please call the roll?
Stengline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, the consent calendar is adopted. Item number six is our council committee report. Six A is Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman, Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had seven items on Safety and Public Works tonight. First item was a proposal by Widseth for the Police Department Exterior Repairs. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval of the proposal from Widseth for the Police Department Exterior Repairs project in the total amount of $25,000, and I so move.
We have a motion by O'Day. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chesak. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
I'll just say this is for construction documents, just the bidding, construction administration. It's not the actual construction, but we are adding in a couple of things, some minor lighting changes and was it ramps?
Herb cut.
Herb cut ramps for ADA compliance.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second item was a Brainerd Industrial Center Restoration Plan. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend the approval of the BIC Restoration Plan as presented. I so move.
Second. Motion by O'Day. Second by Chesak. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, anything? Nope. There's a picture if you want to look at it.
Lovely. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Item number three was a 2024 Pavement Markings Bid. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend the approval of the pavement marking bids in the total amount of $28,884.09, and I so move.
We have a motion by O'Day. A second by Chesak. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
If you remember, we approved this, was it two weeks ago or a month ago, one of our previous meetings? Bids came back a little higher, 16% over what the estimate was, but Brainerd's portion was only 2% higher. So we're just adding $624.14 to this item, just to make it official.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Ms. President. Item number four was a discussion on connection charges for 15106 Riverside Drive. This was the item that took most of our time in committee tonight. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the motion was to push this out two more weeks so we could get some extra information from staff, make more of an informed decision as this sets precedent for the entire neighborhood if we make any changes to this assessment. So I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day. A second by Stengline. Any discussion? Mr. Chesak.
Yes, Mr. President. I voted against this because I believe there is enough information, and my thought was we move forward with it. I made a motion that did not pass or get a second to just charge the full amount. And to suggest that we might change that amount, I think, is absurd in the future because everybody else is paid. So the council can still do something tonight if they wish, obviously. So just throwing that out there.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Chair.
So there was a lot of discussion, and you guys are free to obviously watch that back and get the information. But I'll point out again, Sean, if you could bring up the chart here. We have, this is your cost on the top if you want to hook up to Brainerd City Water and Sewer. And on the bottom, if the county's going to allow you to put a new septic system in, it's $10,000 cheaper. So in my eyes, that presents an issue. We didn't think that the county would allow this, being right next to the river, but it seems like they are. Maybe we have some questions for the county on which properties, how many properties, this is even an option. So that's one major issue, but whatever we do decide, it's going to set a precedent for the rest of this area. And it could possibly spur more development if we did make changes or if we dropped these connection charges. But there are people that have already paid this, so we also have to look at that. We have to see how many people have actually already paid this and just weigh all that information maybe in a couple of weeks. Hopefully, we can get to the bottom of it and decide, unless you guys want to do something else.
We're going to find out.
All right.
Any comments down here?
All good.
I would like to make a comment since I was on the board when this was. I'm agreeing with Mr. Chesak. I do not think we should delay this. I think the petitioner deserves an answer. And truth be told, the only part we're concerned about is the top part. Whatever this, if somebody wants to put a septic system in and they can get somebody to do it for free, that's their decision. The whole concern is this property is outside of the city of Brainerd. They can't connect unless they come in. They've actually, to my understanding, may have already connected, but the price, including SAC, WAC, and connection charges, are what they are. That's the only part we're concerned with, okay? So I think we should tell the person, if the petitioner, if they want to come into the city of Brainerd and hook up to our city and water. By the way, this is a one-time charge. You don't redo this every 15 years like a septic system. And you don't have to, I mean, there's a lot of advantages. Granted, there's $10,000 difference, but it wouldn't have been $10,000, by the way, had they hooked up when the project was first available 20 years ago. Of course, things have gone up. I'm sure septic systems have gone up. But you've got a lot of people that hooked up, not just since the system was online, but at the time when the project was done. I would presume there would be much fervor on those people, from those people, if we started giving discounts now to people who aren't even in the city of Brainerd. So how it's like to be in the city of Brainerd, have paid your SAC, paid your WAC, paid your connection charge, and then now get told, well, if I had waited, I could have got a discount. So I don't, I don't, again, I don't, if the county wants to allow them to dump right into the river, that's the county's problem. But we can't allow them to do that if we allow them in the city of Brainerd. We have standards, probably greater than the county. So anyway, I'm going to vote against the motion to delay. Any other comments? Mr. Johnson?
I'll vote in favor of the motion. I don't think it hurts to get more information so we can make an informed decision. I don't think this contains all of the information of the history of this connection charge, and I would like to see that. I don't think waiting two weeks or a month is going to hurt the petitioner's feelings because they don't want to pay the $17,000 they're required to pay at this moment anyway. So waiting two weeks is probably perfectly fine for them. So I'll vote in favor of the motion.
All right. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak, you want to start round two?
Well, if everybody has a chance.
Yeah, everybody's got their hands on.
Okay, I just wanted to point out in case the rest of the council doesn't know. The contractor did not go through the proper permitting process, and there's a speculation that maybe staff could have been more informative. Well, the same speculation applies to, this would have possibly been caught before they did the work had the contractor done his due diligence and got the permit before he did the work. So there is that element involved here too, and I'll be voting on this motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The motion is to delay two weeks. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Please proceed.
Can we get a?
Tony, you want to call a voice vote?
Stengline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
No.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
No.
Terry?
Yes.
Bevins?
Thank you.
Uh, no, and the motion passes four to three.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Item number five is a contract for improvement 24-01, 2024 Chip Seal Project. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend the award of the contract for improvement 24-01 to Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation in the total amount of $148,920.05. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day. A second by Stengline. Any discussion? Any discussion?
I can tell you, we budgeted $150,000 for this, and this was the one bid that came in under that. The other one was Allied Blacktop Company for $159,000 and change.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Item number six was a contract for improvements 23-15 and 23-27 Evergreen Avenue and Bluff Avenue Rehabilitation. Motion coming out of committee was to award the contract for improvement 23-15 and 23-27 to Anderson Brothers Construction in the bid amount of $131,169.35, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day. A second by Chesak. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Bevins.
Mr. Chesak.
Just to remind the council that this was originally slated to be a mill and overlay on the Evergreen portion, and now it's turned into something more of a deluxe patch project. So that's why, part of the reason we're able to use state aid on this as well. So.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Final item, number seven, for Safety and Public Works. This was just direction on active code enforcement cases, and this case file was for 1420 Quint Street. Recommendation coming out of committee was to obtain an administrative search warrant to abate the junk and debris at 1420 Quint Street, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day. A second by Stengline. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
So this is 14, you can see the pictures here, 1420 Quint Street. This has been a construction site on and off for the past at least decade. So you can see everything that's laying around outside the house. Work continues. There's a lot of complicated factors that go into this one, but long story short, we're going to send some people in to clean this up if we can get that warrant.
Any further discussion? Mr. Johnson?
I really support this. I get complaints about this regularly. This has been a mess of a house for 11 years. 10 years ago, the city council voted to fine this property owner $100 a day until his project was done, and it's still not done. I'd actually like an update on what that number is. It's probably about 400 grand now.
I'll bring that up. So remember the limit?
Yeah, I know.
The limit that you're, that you really want? We had a limit up until a couple of years ago that you could only fine somebody, what was it, $2,000 or $3,000 in a single year? So that limited that $100 a day quite a bit since then. Otherwise, we, yeah, otherwise they would owe us like $350,000 or something.
Thanks, Gabe. Mr. Chair, I have a question. Don't these building permits have an expiration?
Uh, James can answer that one.
He has actually been reaching out to the building official from time to time.
No, 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 that's not what I asked. I asked, don't they have a expiration?
It's 180 days unless you're working with the building official. So the one was issued for the foundation work that he's working on right now, this past, not this, well, not this spring, but the spring before. So as long as you're making progress and working on the foundation, which did happen, that part stays open. But again, the junk and debris is something that is a code violation that we've sent letters for, and we haven't received feedback from that.
But he didn't get a permit. Yeah, but I might guess that the permit maybe, or maybe extending the permits a little long. 11 years seems like a long time. It does to me.
And those permits have closed out.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak.
If, can he still do the work without a permit?
Yeah, apparently. No, apparently not.
Well, that's staff.
So right now, so Permit C has been doing various types of work. Right now, the permit is for the foundation only at this point. So I know there, I think there was a collapse at one point that slowed that part down. That part's been repaired, and they're now working on the foundation, I think, in the front of the house. But progress has been made on some of that, and there has been inspections on that part of it. This is really to clean up the junk and debris around the property.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
End of report.
Next up is item 6B, Personal and Finance Committee Chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three items, the first of which is to reclassify Tyler Heinlein to a CSO position, and the motion is to reclassify Tyler Heinlein to a Community Service Officer effective March 22nd, 2024, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson. A second by Stunek. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
He was a police intern. He did his 67 working days that an intern can do, so we're reclassifying him to be a CSO so he can still work in the department.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Next item is approval of memorandums of agreement regarding the new E S S T law, and the motion is to approve the attached E S S T MOAs with I U O E Local Number 49, representing the Street and Park Maintenance Division employees, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson. A second by Terry. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
This is that state law required to do this. We now have agreements in place with all but one bargaining unit.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Okay, next up is a discussion regarding the Assistant Planner position, but it wasn't just discussion. We actually took action. And the motion was to reestablish the zoning tech permit technician position with the attached job description, approve the job classification points of 351, and authorize staff to negotiate a wage for the zoning specialist with the I B E W Administrative Support Union, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson. A second by Stunek. Any discussion?
This is because we've had trouble hiring the assistant planners. This is a different type position in that department that can handle a lot of the similar work that the planner was doing. This was actually the position we hired that I opposed hiring James Cranvik at years ago. I was wrong on that one, too. Staff did also request hire, authorize, authorization to hire a part-time employee to help with administrative work, but we just put that off, and we'll handle that at a later time after this position's filled.
Appreciate that. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Chesak.
Would the part-time employee be Patrick Wilson?
Yes.
He's too expensive.
Yeah, that's for sure. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
End of report.
Item seven is unfinished business. Item 7A is a call for applicants. The mayor is not here this evening. You want to read it, or you want me to? All right. The mayor's got a couple of spots on the charter commission expiring in 2026 and two spots to expire in 2025. The Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms to expire in 2026. He also has one term on the Economic Development Authority to expire in 2026. As council president, I've got one term on the Parking Commission to expire in 2026 and one term to expire in 2028. Item 7B is approving a compromise agreement with the city of Baxter regarding the assessment appeal. And Connie Hillman, anything you want to add to what's in our packet?
I'd actually like to open this up to Attorney Lengel to see if he has anything to add.
Sure. Attorney Lengel.
So, Mr. President, council, this agreement is consistent with direction provided by the city council in terms of the dollar amount settled as for. There's no interest being added to it. It's just one-time straight payment of $13,000, and the city of Brainerd, or Baxter rather, has already approved it.
Any questions of the attorney or any staff? Hearing none. We're looking to approve the compromise agreement with the city of Baxter. So moved. Motion by Chesak. Second by Stunek. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Chesak.
I'd just like to thank the Brainerd Dispatch for having this in the paper like a week ago, so we know about it before we even get to our meeting.
I know. They could probably handle all our work.
I think it'd be doing good.
All right. Any further discussion? I read that myself. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight is new business. Item A is setting a public hearing and presentation on the Municipal Storm Sewer Systems MS4 Permit. Jesse Dean, City Engineer, Public Works Director, anything you want to add to what's in our packet?
Nothing to add what's on the agenda items here.
Okay, and the recommendation is for the May 20th meet at the regular scheduled meeting. So moved. Motion by Chesak. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have a public hearing and presentation on the MS4 Permit. Item eight, new business B, is looking to adopt a resolution governing write-in vote counting. Connie Hillman, anything you wish to add to what's in our packet?
Um, just that legislation changed, which allow municipalities to have two options when it comes to counting write-ins for municipal races. The option one is to only count the write-ins when a written request is made to the chief election official, no later than seven days before the election. Or the other option, only if the total number of write-in votes for an office is equal to or greater than the fewest number of non-write-in votes for the ballot candidate for that office. Staff's recommendation would be to go with the option number one, which is to count if it's only filed with the election office seven days beforehand, and this is similar to how federal, county, and state write-ins are handled as well.
Questions of staff? Mr. Chesak.
Yes, being that we don't count our ballots here, they're sent over to Crow Wing County. Do they just then, if we agree to do as you're suggesting or recommendation, do they just take all of these ballots with write-ins and follow the process we direct them to do for our precincts in the city?
Actually, at the precincts is where they would count the write-ins. So at the end of the night, when the tape comes, they have to go through the whole pile of write-ins and count all the write-ins for the municipality races. And it can be Mickey Mouse, it can be Donald Duck, they have to count each one of them, which can cause a lot of time at the end of the night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I have one question. I don't see an option three, which is continue to do what we've been doing. Is that not an option?
I'm sorry, it would be an option. Then you wouldn't have to adopt the resolution either.
Right, we would just move on to the next thing. And then Mayor Bedeau did call me, who was unable to make it today, and said that would be his choice to allow people's write-in votes to still be counted without having any changes. So he thought that was the American way.
And we can continue to do that. It just takes a lot of time and effort on, for our election judges at the end of the night when a lot of times the write-ins don't have an impact on the race at the end, anyway. So that would just be my recommendation.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak.
So if there was a race that was tight and the write-in votes may play a role, they would then go back to count them, correct? I mean, you could write in somebody even though it's on the ballot, right?
You can write in somebody that's already on the ballot?
Could you not?
You could. I don't know why you would do that, though. But you could.
Okay. Just throwing it out there.
Any further questions of staff? Hearing none. We're looking for a motion. Staff has given us two options. This is a resolution. Or we can do nothing, which would be just, they all get counted, same as always. Anybody wish to take a stab at a resolution with either of these two options? Or there's a possibility of something else, maybe?
I will move that we follow staff, that we go with option one and adopt the resolution associated with option one.
Thank you. Tiffany, is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second her discussion.
You got it. So we have a motion by Stengline, a second by Chesak. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to let Mr. O'Day go first since you've talked twice. Mr. O'Day?
We've been counting write-ins for 250 some odd years in our elections. Why stop now? I get that it's a little extra work, but I just feel like if every vote doesn't count, then we're changing something. And it's, even though it's something maybe silly, it might not be at some point.
Thank you. Mr. Chesak.
Yes, when I heard Mayor Bedeau said this is the American way to do as Mr. O'Day suggests we do, I'm all in favor of it. Just leaving things the way they are.
Thank you.
I agree.
Any further discussion? Okay?
Yeah, I'll vote against the motion too. I think we should count all the ballots.
Thank you. But, yeah, Kara, go ahead.
Do we have an idea of the numbers of the write-ins that are counted each year, Connie?
You know, I don't have that number, but I can tell you that they've never contested the race.
I think I had eight last election, because I requested them for the first time.
So just to let you know.
You can request the write-ins.
I mean, like, we have 4,000 voters that turn out at a precinct, and 30 of those have write-ins, but not even in the municipality. It requires the judges to go through all of those write-in votes, find the election, and write it down. I can tell you it's very, very time-consuming at the end. You know, I think if you have a, option one would give you that if you truly want a write-in campaign and didn't file in time, you can file with the office, and we will count every write-in for that candidate that wants to file the write-in.
And, yeah, Kara, go ahead.
I agree with what other council members are saying in terms of counting every vote. Not everyone is well-versed on the processes or procedures in which to have your vote counted, and so maintaining status quo, I think, makes the most sense, even though it will take extra time or the time we've been taking all of these years.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Tiffany?
Since I made the motion, I, I mean, I don't feel strongly, but I do have a general tendency to support consistency. And make, and in, with the goal of making things easier, but I am not upset if this fails.
Excellent. You want to withdraw your motion?
No, I think we should vote on it.
See what happens. All right. So I think we just, you want to, sure, Chief, go ahead.
Well, I can't let everybody else talk without me saying.
Our motion is going to be defeated.
I agree with Mr. O'Day. I agree with Mr. Johnson. I agree with my neighbor here, and I'm on the same island, so let's move forward.
We're voting no.
We're voting no. Let's move. Okay, I, everybody, I think, I sense consensus. This is a resolution. Can you call the roll, Tony?
Stengline?
Even, even Tony doesn't want to do this.
I could have voted for my own motion.
Stengline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Nope.
Chesak?
No.
O'Day?
No.
Stunek?
Nope.
Terry?
No.
Bevins?
No. The resolution fails. Anybody else want to do anything on this? All right. Hearing none. We're going to move on. Sorry, Connie. Item nine, which is the public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. We'd like to have you keep it to three to five minutes. It is 7:58, and I will open the public hearing. If you are online and wish to speak in the public hearing, please hit star three on your keyboard. That'll notify us.
For discussion.
That you want to speak. And I'll ask a second time if there's anybody who wishes to speak to the council on anything that's not on tonight's agenda. And I will ask a third and final time if anybody online or in the council chambers wishes to notify the council of their opinions. Hearing none. We will close the public forum at 7:59. We'll move on to staff reports. We'll start off to my right from the Police Department. Anything tonight?
Nothing to report.
Thank you for being here. Anything from ITGIS?
Nothing tonight.
How about Eric Sharptier from the HRA Online?
He's in a towel.
Is that Kenny?
He's under the bridge.
All right, Eric, keep trying. Our Finance Director, Hillman?
Dad.
Our City Engineer, Public Works Director, Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have two updates. Next week's park board meeting will have a specific item regarding a potential developer. If you remember, the council is interested in the potential for development in the Buffalo Hills Park area. And the city's been working with the school district regarding their parcel to, just to the north. We have a developer that has provided a proposal to the park board, in a sense, kind of a land swap. They want to develop a little bit of the east area of the park while dedicating. uh, while dedicating some of the park, or the land to the north, to the park board, uh, kind of in an exchange. Uh, so that'll be at the next park board meeting for their consideration. Uh, I can't remember the exact amount of housing that they were looking at, but I think it was like senior housing, if I remember it, uh, and potentially some affordable housing as well. Um, so that is what they're, they're pitching for that area. Uh, the other update would be, uh, obviously, if you haven't noticed, construction has started on our big South Brainerd project, uh, barrels all over Sixth Street as well. Um, they've been, uh, really getting crazy with the removals, and hopefully, this week, they'll get started on utilities.
Thank you, Jesse, James, anything from committee development?
Thank you, Mr. President, just a few items here. So, uh, the Brainerd E D A will be touring Giovanni's Frozen Pizza tomorrow as part of their, uh, business retention visits. Uh, it's a frozen pizza, and it's in the industrial park next to the street's garage. Um, I think they do provide, uh, seven different states, so, um, there'll be a tour of the facility tomorrow for the E D A. Uh, the E D A also recommended that the city council consider a brokerage agreement for the lease, uh, or sale of the annex building. The proposed contractor was not quite ready for this council meeting, but it will be at the next regular council meeting agenda. Um, also, the planning commission has a number of items at their next Wednesday meeting. They'll be talking about the short-term rental ordinance, as well as a cannabis dispensary ordinance, and the land use permits for 805 Laurel Street project, um, and a planning review of a proposed Outlet F development in the Brainerd Oaks, uh, that is currently owned by the HRA. Uh, Level Contracting, who's been doing the houses there, is proposing a development in that area. Um, the 805 Laurel Street zoning permits and consideration of the city of Brainerd applying on behalf of D W Jones for the Minnesota Workforce Housing Grant will be on the special city council agenda next Monday at 6:00 P M. Uh, in addition to this item, Level Contracting for that Outlet F um, has also requested consideration of the city of Brainerd to also sign on behalf of them for the workforce housing grant from the state of Minnesota, so that will be added to the special council meeting. Um, and then last, uh, the Duncan Donuts Project on Washington Street has begun construction, and they're working towards completion at some point this spring.
No donuts yet, though.
No donuts yet.
Attorney Lengel? H R Director Schuber? And, uh, before I go to our city administrator, has Eric Sharptier joined us?
Eric, are you still there? Apparently not.
Nothing, okay, our city administrator?
No, sir, nothing further.
All right, next up is council member reports, we'll start to my right, Chief Stunek.
I have nothing.
Kara, Terry?
Nothing.
Gabe Johnson?
Uh, the ball fields are groomed and bases are in at, at Bain Park, I don't know if they're in J C Park yet, but thanks to the Parks Department, it looks great. Boys are out there practicing tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cheswick?
Yeah, um, just kinda reflecting back on some of our earlier discussion, uh, I don't know, 10, 10, 15 years ago, we did a sidewalk project, and everybody was told you either replace the sidewalk yourself, if it was in disrepair, or the city will come along with a contractor and do it for you. And everybody had to pay for that. Now, our policies changed, but at that time, at that time, um, we changed that policy shortly after that project got done, which took a couple of years. And now we're, so some of these property owners were, uh, thinking, well, wait a minute, I fixed mine, and now you're telling other people they don't have to pay for their sidewalk to be repaired. So, that rubbed people the wrong way, so I just want us to think about that as we move forward on some of these, um, uh, assessments that are due when we hook up to water and sewer. Thank you.
Tiffany?
Uh, so I have a, a couple of things. The landlords group met and had an excellent presentation from Lieutenant Coulser. He handled a lot of great questions about cannabis and how landlords, um, can or cannot, uh, regulate what their, their tenants are doing. Um, and then I wanna share, we had an A T P meeting, and I learned a new word, something everyone should be watching out for.
Did we need to mute our?
I don't, well, maybe, when you hear what it is, you might need to mute some responses. It's called a diverge about? And it's when you take a roundabout, when a roundabout and a divergent diamond interchange fall in love, you get a diverge about.
We need more of those. The roundabouts are not complex enough. You don't suppose the Dunkin' Donuts and the cannabis rules have anything to do with it?
Oh, maybe.
O'Day?
Um, I was gonna mention the, the tour of Giovanni's in the morning, looking forward to seeing how the pizza is made.
Yeah, I don't think they have any ovens, that's what they make the pizza, though.
Oh, I'm not going.
It's like frozen.
I'm not going, then.
Just so you know.
Just kidding, I'll be there.
As will I. Um, next up is adjournment, we're gonna look for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Has that meeting been given public notice, E D A, their tour?
I believe it was at the last E D A meeting, yeah. Maybe, maybe not.
Well, adjourning is not public notice.
Right on.
So.
I don't know.
It's not.
We don't know, do we know?
I know, it's not.